Good evening, everybody, and welcome to Jacksonville City Hall. A great crowd come out tonight to see our new council members be sworn in, some returning council members also. Following this oath-taking ceremony which we'll conduct here in just a minute, we will begin the organization meeting, council meeting. So with that said, I would like to ask Cindy Edwards and her family, Greg, I think Greg's here, now I will be providing the oath for Ms. Edwards.
Can my pastor come up as well?
Oh. Pastor Phillips. I, Cindy Edwards.
I, Cindy Edwards.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as councilman.
The duties of my office as councilman.
There you go. And maintain and uphold all the laws and regulations.
And maintain and uphold all the laws and regulations.
Of the city of Jacksonville, so help me God.
Of the city of Jacksonville, so help me God. First of all, thank you to God for making all of this possible, my incredibly patient and supportive husband, and all of my friends, family, and fellow citizens who made this work. I was told at the beginning of this journey that you're like a turtle on a fence post, you surely didn't get there by yourself, and nothing could be more true, so thank you.
Next, I'd like to call up Councilmember-elect Mickey Smith. And Bishop Smith, I know you're here, any family members you want to bring with you? Now, I'd like to call up Carol Jones of Fifth Judicial District Court. Good to see you. Well, you're here.
All right, repeat after me, place your left hand up. Thank you. I, Mickey Smith.
I, Mickey Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As councilwoman.
As councilwoman.
And maintain and uphold.
And maintain and uphold.
All the laws and regulations.
All the laws and regulations.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I already know that if I start mentioning names, I'm gonna forget someone, but the first name I want to definitely mention is God Almighty Himself. Is He not an orchestrator of life, and I'm so grateful to you, Father, for this opportunity to represent Your people. Second, I want to definitely shout out to my man. Okay, okay, okay. I want to thank God for none other than Bishop Will Smith of New Beginnings Christian Center. Thank you so much for your love and support, and always being there for me, and I'm so grateful. These 33 years have been amazing, and I can't wait for many more.
Amen.
Amen. Two, all of the organizations that God has allowed me to be a part of, just starting with New Beginnings Christian Center, where y'all at? Okay, I'll give another shout-out, we'll say, to Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. Where's the NAACP? And then we have the Eastern Carolina, there we go, come on, y'all, let's give it up for Ms. Marshall Wright. Definitely one of my primary mentors here, and I'm so, so grateful. And then I have my brothers of, I need to say, my sis, where y'all at? All right, that's all I wanted to hear. But also, to Ward Two, are you in the house? Uh-huh, uh-huh, y'all added up some numbers, and I appreciate you guys. But, you know, to the city of Jacksonville, where are you, city of Jacksonville? What a major honor. I thank God for all of you, and I thank God for this opportunity to serve. And then I gotta mention these names because they're gonna say, why didn't you say these names? I gotta say Mary Covington, because that's my mama. I gotta say Eric Covington, because that's my daddy. Then I gotta say Charles and Elaine Daniels, because they're my spiritual parents. And then I gotta say Sharon Hagan, because that's my mother-in-law. And then I gotta say to two people who have been instrumental in spoiling my husband to no end, none other than to the Burtons, I thank God for those two individuals that drove all the way from Virginia to surprise me tonight. I thank God for the anointing on their lives and what they mean to me. But to all of you, thank you so much, and again, I know I'm gonna be in trouble because I didn't mention everybody, but you know where you are in my heart, and I'll definitely be sending you personal texts and emails, just thanking you for your support and love. God bless you. To the clergy of Jacksonville, where are you? Yeah, yeah, those are my brothers and sisters in arms, and I'm gonna continue to stay on that pulpit and preach the Word of God. God bless you.
Next, I'd like to call up Jerome Willingham. Judge Paul Artson, you'll be administering the oath. Y'all, come on up here, quick, please. Mr. Kavnis, you can make it.
I, Jerome Willingham.
I, Jerome Willingham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the laws of North Carolina.
And the laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As councilman.
As councilman.
And maintain and uphold the laws.
And maintain and uphold the laws.
And regulations.
And regulations.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay, thank you all for coming out on this rainy night. You've turned it into a very beautiful and outstanding evening. Family was very important in this campaign. My co-campaign manager was my daughter Tiffany, and she impressed me with her event planning and being able to pull things together. And Darius Mitchell, because my church was important, and so, in the sense of family, that includes the church family also, so their participation was very important. One thing that we tried to do was introduce this concept called consensus building. And so, when I was out and about, began hearing it repeated from others. That's what I tried to do with my history of city council, is try to present a good idea, be persuasive about it, get the support of other council members, and have a transformational kind of agenda. And I think we were able to do that, and that was one reason we put all that information on the side, so people could read and see what we were able to do in the past. And so, I really look forward to the opportunity of consensus building again, and that involves working with council for the betterment of this city. Thank you.
Judge Welsch. Well, I mean, everybody that was part of my campaign, come on up and stand behind me, I'd love that. Come on, Ernie, come on. Come on, John, come on, come on. Come on. I, Michael Yunero.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As councilman.
As councilman.
And maintain and uphold.
Maintain and uphold.
All the laws and regulations.
All the laws and regulations.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank God too, and I'd like to thank my wife, she says I was running, she was not. But I also like to thank everybody that made it possible here. You know, I think of one place, I think of the YMCA, I think of the Rotary Club, I think of my church, it's all family, you know, so I appreciate everything that everyone has done for me, because I didn't get here alone. And, you know, I often talk about my grandfather, because he came from Italy in 1907, worked in the coal mines for 10 years, was drafted and sent back to fight in World War I. And one of the things he used to say all the time was that we, his generation, must make sacrifices to make the next generation a better place to live. And I really believe that that's been ingrained in me as a young child, and I think that's the most important thing that we can do, and that's the reason I ran for council, because I think one of the most important things that we can invest in is our children, and we gotta make sure that the next generation lives a better life than ours, so. Again, I wish I could name everybody that I need to thank, but I certainly love you all and appreciate everything that you all have done for me. I would ask all my fellow council members to join me at the dice.
to the new city council members. God bless you guys. Let us pray. Father, we have come to this place with gratefulness and thanksgiving in our heart, as colleagues, as neighbors, and friends. We gather here in a spirit of service and responsibility, mindful of the trust placed in this council by the people of our great city. May they seek the common good above personal interests, and govern with integrity, humility, and courage. Let us all be reminded that leadership is a stewardship, not a privilege, a commitment to the well-being of all residents, especially those most in need. May they listen with patience, speak with honesty, and deliberate with care. Help them to build differences with respect, to honor the dignity of every citizen, and to act with transparency and equity. Grant them wisdom to make decisions that will endure beyond their terms. Give them the humility to admit mistakes and to resolve, and to resolve to learn and improve. May their deliberations also be guided by the law, guided by compassion, and guided by the knowledge that the public service is a trust to be honored every day. Bless the new council members who stand before us, and bless all those who work in service of this city, from essential workers to volunteers, from teachers and small business owners. Holy Spirit, teach us.
Yes.
Guide us.
Yes.
And lead us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please proceed. All right, council, you've been provided an agenda for the night's meeting, and I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda and the consent items, there's three consent items that are on the agenda.
Move, move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion here? None in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. So our first order of business is for the election of the mayor pro tem. And basically, the mayor pro tem acts in my incapacitation or absence, and that's basically what they do. So with that, I would open up for nominations for mayor pro tem.
Mayor Phillips, I move that Ms. Councilmember Jerome Willingham.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. Okay, is there any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like Ms. Edwards as mayor pro tem.
I'll second that. All right, all those in favor of Mr. Willingham.
Can we have a discussion?
Absolutely.
Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the Jacksonville City Council, citizens of our beloved city, and honored guests, today we gather in a spirit of unity and a purpose as we approach a significant monument in our governor's. It is a moment that calls for reflection, unity, and vision as we prepare to elect our next mayor pro tem. Today we gather not just to fulfill a procedural obligation, but to embrace an opportunity that speaks to the very heart of our community. The mayor pro tem is not just a title nor formality, it is not a role merely ceremonial in nature, rather, it is a position filled with responsibility, leadership, and above all, the capacity to build consensus in our city. The role of the mayor pro tem is a critical position that carries the responsibility of leading our city in the absence of our mayor. It is a role that demands not only competence and vision, but also a deep commitment to the collaboration and their unity among us all. It is a vital role that ensures continuity and leadership, particularly when the mayor is absent or unable to fulfill his responsibilities. This role is especially crucial in maintaining the flow of decision-making and serving the needs and aspirations of our community without interruption. As we consider who will take on this essential role, we must reflect on the leadership, collaboration, and vision we hold for our beloved Jacksonville. As we gather here today, I wish to emphasize the words of John C. Maxwell, a renowned leadership expert, who once said, "If you are a leader, a true measure of your success is not getting people to work, it is not getting people to work hard, it is getting people to work hard together." That takes commitment. This statement encapsulate the essence of what we seek in our net mayor pro tem. It is in this spirit that we reflect on the legacy of our previous mayor pro tem, who have all come from Ward Two and Three. They have set a remarkable standard, not only guided our past council, but has also fostered a sense of collaboration that resonates throughout our city. As we look to the future, we must ask ourselves, who will continue this tradition and ensure our council remains a beacon of hope and progress? I want to take this moment to highlight the exceptional qualities of an individual who stands ready to embrace this role. Councilmember Jerome Willingham of Ward One, a current resident and member of the Jacksonville City Council. We need a leader whose influence will continue to inspire us to come together, to forge partnerships, and create a stronger Jacksonville for all. Council, as we stand at this crossroad, I urge you to think about commitment. Commitment to our city, commitment to our constituents, commitment to each other as council members. Today, I advocate for a leader who embodies this commitment, a leader who has proven time and again, he can bring together people for a common purpose. Like Deputy Police Chief Mayor Sammy Phillips with 50 years of experience, Chief of Police, Public Safety Director, Councilmember Michael Yunero that brings 25 years of service, and City Manager, Councilmember, former mayor pro tem Jerry Bitner with also 25-plus years of dedicated service to the city of Jacksonville. For almost 20, excuse me, 20, excuse me, two decades, Mr. Willingham has exemplified the very leadership qualities as these leaders so stated. As a resolute member of the Jacksonville City Council representing Ward One, Mr. Willingham has consistently demonstrated his commitment to our community and the diverse needs. His tenure has been marked by transformational leadership, a hallmark which is his ability to bring and to close the gaps between neighborhoods, fostering an environment where collaboration thrives. Mr. Willingham is not just competent, he is a visionary. He understands the importance of intersecting the boundaries of Wards One, Two, and Three for the betterment of all citizens. He sees beyond the confines of his own ward and recognizes that our strength lies in unity. In his tenure, he has led by example, setting standards for what is means of a servant leader. His commitment to fostering, excuse me, a culture of innovation and accountability has paved the way for initiatives that have benefited our entire city. In today's complex landscape, adaptability is crucial. Councilmember Willingham possesses a remarkable capacity for emotional intelligence, allowing him to navigate challenges with grace and understanding. He listens, he empathizes, and he acts accordingly. His journey as a transformational leader is not only evident in his work, but by the lives he has touched. Jerome Willingham is not just a name we recognize, he is a consensus builder. He possesses the unique abilities to intersect the boundaries of our neighborhoods, recognizing that the strength of Jacksonville is our diversity. He understands that every voice matters, and he has dedicated his career to ensuring that all citizens within Wards One, Two, Three, and Four are heard and their concerns are addressed. Competency is the cornerstone of effective leadership. Mr. Willingham has consistently demonstrated his capacity to navigate complex issues that our community has faced, from economic development to public safety. He has never shied away from difficult conversations. In every initiative he has taken, he has led by example, inspiring those around him to pursue excellence. What sets Mr. Willingham apart is his abilities to understand that leadership is not just about making decisions, it's about making a difference in the lives that we serve. For example, over the past 30 years, citizens have benefited from the ward election system in which members of the community has representation on the city council. However, did you know that our local military installations, Camp Lejeune, Marine Corps Air Station New River, were annexed in the city of Jacksonville as a result of implementing the ward election system? the ward election system? Likewise, communities such as Georgetown and Picket Town, that was once forgotten, was also annexed in the city of Jacksonville. Mr. Willingham has leveraged an earmarked local, state, and federal funding to build infrastructures within these neighborhoods by protecting and enhancing the quality of life issues affecting Jacksonville's citizens, ranging from newborn to the elderly. Riverwalk Crossing is another example of Mr. Willingham's forward-thinking by implementing downtown redevelopment initiatives, such as the revitalization of livable housing, incentivizing economic development, entrepreneurship of local businesses, and creating a viable recreation options to the downtown area while enhancing citizens' leisure activity to enjoy the scenic views of the New River in their backyards. Riverwalk Crossing is home to National Night Out, Winter Fest, the annual Christmas tree lighting, just to name a few. Prior to the United States of America, celebrating Juneteenth as a national holiday, the Jacksonville City Council approved Freedom Day commemorating the Thirteenth Amendment, the abolishment of slavery, modern-day human trafficking, and false imprisonment, which has led to mass incarceration of innocent citizens. All of these efforts was guided by Councilmember Willingham's ingenuity. In addition, he spearheaded the hiring of John Carter as the full-time city attorney and championed the efforts of hiring Dr. Richard Woodruff, former city manager. Councilmember Willingham served his country as a decorated Jack officer, acquiring the rank of captain in the United States Marine Corps, and continues to serve his country as a Department of Navy federal employee, advising senior-level executive on matters related to equal opportunity, Equal Employment Opportunity Commission policies and procedures. Council, there is a profound appreciation and respect for coming up through the ranks in the city of Jacksonville, just as Mayor Phillips, Councilmember Yunero, Councilmember Jerry Bitner, who have all come up through the ranks. We cannot ignore Councilmember Willingham's journeys, accomplishments, contributions, as coming up through the ranks and which our beloved citizens have experienced. In conclusion, Council, I urge each of you to consider the weight of tonight's decision. Electing Mr. Willingham as our Mayor Pro Tem is not just a choice for today, it is rather a return on investment for the future of Jacksonville. His acumen and accolades are not just statistics, they are the real stories behind our beloved residents, the stories of our shared journey towards a brighter future. As we prepare to cast our votes, let us remember the words of John C. Maxwell, "It is not enough to work hard, we must work together." Councilmember Willingham has shown us just how to do that. His leadership has brought our community closer, and his vision has inspired us to reach new heights. In conclusion, I urge all of you in joining me in supporting Councilmember Willingham for the role of Mayor Pro Tem. Let us continue the legacy of strong leadership that have served our city so well. Together, we can build a brighter future. Let us move forward, united in purpose and dedicated to the commitment and well-being of our community. Thank you.
Ms. Edwards, would you like to just take part in the discussion?
Surely. Thank you, Logan, for the nomination and Michael for the second. I'm not a woman of dissertation-length words. We have other things that we want to do this evening, but I will say this much. I married a cute marine, that's what brought me to town, but we stayed and raised our kids here because this is our home. It went from our home of record to our home of choice, and we love Jacksonville. And for 32 years we have been here, this has been our priority, raising our family here and making contributions to this community. I've owned a business in town for 25 years, and through that, 25 years of business leadership, we have grown all kinds of things. You see our work all over town, you just don't know it. It's, it's fun sometimes to drive around and see the logos we've designed and the signs we've done and the vehicle wraps that we've done and marketing. But in addition to that, I've worked on many different committees, Civic Affairs for over 10 years. I've worked with the Chamber of Commerce, I chaired their Board of Directors, I was the Chairman of the Board for the Council for the Arts. And in all of those places, interestingly enough, the opportunity that God brought me was to make positive change and bring people together. At the Council for the Arts, when I got there, there were some very, very archaic policies in place, and I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but if we're going to talk facts, this is what it was. There was one person of African-American heritage on that board, and they had to belong to a fraternity or sorority or have a degree to be considered. Random things that made no sense. And there was, you know, Suzy's month and Joey's month, and some things were locked in that were not very good. So, we did some work. We changed leadership, we changed board structure, we changed the programming in the council itself, and we moved away from the Us Four and No More Click system, as well I'll call it, to put it in brass-tack terms, to a system where everyone was welcome. And so, instead of having, you know, Suzy have the show in April, because Suzy's always had the show in April, we had a show in April that was titled Rain and Water. And anyone in Onslow County who had a piece of art that they wanted to submit, written, music, visual, or otherwise, could bring that in and submit it to that, and it was juried right along everyone else's, and it wasn't just an Us Four No More Club. And one of the most impactful things, I think, through that entire journey that meant the most to me was when I was walking out of that building, and this was, gosh, 2018, I think now, I was met on the sidewalk by a woman who had a better tan than me, beautiful woman, and she gave me a hug and said, "This is the first time I've ever felt welcome here." And that meant a lot to me, because I believe our home church is a beautiful representation. I go to River of Life Church, and we have over 50 nationalities that attend our church, and I believe that's exactly what heaven's going to look like. So, we do need unity, and we do need consensus. We also need humility and accessibility and things done in the grassroots level that really make a difference in people's lives. So, am I the most qualified? I don't know, but I'll tell you this, I'm here, and I'll do the work, and I'm not afraid of it, and I'm accessible and available and willing to take it on. Everywhere God has put me, I've made a difference for the better. We've come out stronger, more unified, and more truly beautifully diverse. So, I'm willing. Thank you.
Of course, I forgot to ask if there was any other nominations besides Mr. Willingham and Ms. Edwards?
Mayor Phillips?
Go ahead.
Did you have something?
Did I have something to say?
I was looking at Jerome. Did you have something to say?
We kind of set our own criteria for the qualifications for Mayor Pro Tem, and you, over the years, may have heard seniority, you may have heard accomplishments, but I think that, especially in this era when meritocracy is expressed a lot, I think we should be looking for best qualified. And so, whatever the criteria that the council has to determine best qualified, I'm satisfied with that.
All right. With that, I would put it out there again, all those who support Mr. Willingham as Mayor Pro Tem, please raise your hand. All those supporting Ms. Edwards, raise your hand. Okay. We have a three, a three-split here. So, it comes down to me, I've had to have to do this before. Mr. Willingham, you're a very qualified individual, but you've been, been away for a while. Ms. Edwards is still with, has been with the organization now, is in her second term, and she does know the direction the city is traveling in at this point in time. You still have a little bit of a catching-up period there that you've got to do. So, I'm going to cast my vote in favor of Ms. Edwards as Mayor Pro Tem.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay. Here we go. Next, we have, get down to some advisory committees, and these are the ones that I'm appointing, and I'm going to go down the list here. Dr. Washington, you're going to take the Board of Adjustment. Ms. Smith, Environmental and Apairance Committee. Mr. Willingham, Neighborhood Improvement Services Advisory Committee. Mr. Sosa, Planning Advisory Board. Ms. Edwards, Recreation and Park Advisory Committee.
Sure.
Mr. Yunero, Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. Those are my appointments. You've got that noted, right? Okay. Next, we have election to special committees, and we'll start, first off, get my cheat sheet out here. Well, also Civic Affairs, there is no vacancies in that, that particular committee, so there's no action that's required at this time. Ms. Washington, Dr. Washington is the mayor's representative, and Cindy Edwards is a current member of that board. Also, Water and Sewer Authority, due to recent changes to the ONWAS bylaws and resolution by the city council, and the fact that Mr. Bitner has expressed that he would like to remain on the board in his current position, there's no vacancy open on ONWAS at this time. I think your term ends in 2028. Transportation Advisory Committee, or TAC.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Mayor, point of order?
Oh, yes. Okay.
I was under the impression that we would be voting on these seats.
Well, I, I think you're, you're incorrect.
Okay.
There was a resolution that was passed that allows for non-electeds to serve on the ONWAS board, and their terms are not up.
No, that's not what I was referring to.
I'm sorry.
I thought that election to special committees, that was the ones that we would vote on.
Yeah. But like I said, there's no action required on these first two items.
Okay.
All right. The Transportation Advisory Committee, or TAC, this is open for nominations for Mr. Warden's seat, and at this time, I accept nominations for the TAC.
Mr. Mayor, I, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Mickey Smith to serve on the TAC.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Is there any other nominations?
Mayor Phillips, I move that the nominations be closed and a candidate be accepted by acclamation.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Next is the Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority. There's one seat open, and that is because of the passing of our, our good friend Ken Hagan last month. So, this time, we have one term. His term expires June 30th of 2028, and open up for nominations for that seat.
Mr. Merrill, nominate, Mr. Mickey Yunero.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any other nominations? Here are none in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right. Mr. Ray, you have some One City moments that you want. Now, I'll come back to the reports after you do that.
Mr. Mayor, appreciate this opportunity, and to the newly elected, congratulations to the sitting council. Thank you for, for being here. To all of our citizens, thanks for being here with us tonight. It's very exciting for us to have the opportunity to celebrate together and to talk about our One City. Anthony's going to stand there and point at the screen, apparently, as we're looking at different things here. He's definitely no Van Nuys, but it's what we've got, and we're going to work with right now. So, Anthony's on one, and Terrell's on the other. We'll have it covered. We have a lot of things that we want to run through, Mayor, because we've got a lot going on, especially during the holiday season. As a community, we have a lot to give thanks for. Recently, our Jacksonville Police Department issued civilian commendations to three individuals. You see here, Chief Phelps, these three individuals actually came to the aid of a police officer that was attacked in our community. So, what you're going to see here is Michael Lopez, Daniel Ty Lee, and Andrew Azar. Very often, you see things in the, in the news about things that happen that aren't good, positive stories. For this situation, the police department took it upon themselves to say thank you to our citizens who stepped up in a time of need to say, "We're going to help one of our community members." And I think that's an awesome opportunity for us to, to recognize these individuals for stepping up and being a part of our community. Truly is, and One City Community type of feel. We also had the First Lady of the United States and the Second Lady of the United States, Ms. Trump and Ms. Vance, they visited our community. You'll see them here amongst the troops. They went to, to the high school, they went to see the troops, they talked to, talked to the individuals about what it's like being here in our community, how great of an experience for us to be involved and to have our students and our fellow citizens in Jacksonville to be able to, to be with the First Lady and the Second Lady. And best of all, right here, Mayor, you have the son of Joseph McNichols, who works in our Human Resources Department, right here with the First Lady and the Second Lady, to welcome them to our community. No finer way than to have Jacksonville's finest say welcome to our community and thank you for being here. It's, it's excellent to see these individuals choose to be here in our Jacksonville and take their time to talk about housing, to talk about education, to talk about family, and to talk about service. We also had our Veterans Parade. We have two parades that happen in our community, and we, we packed the streets of Western Boulevard, and, and these are great occasions for us to really look at civic pride and appreciation in a military host community. Right here, we have our, our veterans, which hosted by the Rolling Thunder, Chapter North Carolina Five, and we have all of our veterans organizations that are able to come out, come through in the parade, and for our citizens to be able to appreciate the service that they give to our community still to this day, no matter how long they have served or when they served, these are the people that make our community special. You'll see the multiple groups here that are able to, to have this honor inside of a military host community. It's very exciting for us to be there and to see the different groups that are present. And then, following that parade, we had our Jacksonville Holiday Parade. You're going to see multiple members of our community here. Colonel Farrington from New River Air Station was, was there during the parade. You see a lot of kids, you see this guy in a Jeep with no doors, maybe next time, we'll find him some doors, but it's a tough crowd out there. Every once in a while, you can't throw candy, so you just have to see if the mayor steps out. But our, our community loves the atmosphere. You see here, as we talked about earlier, about being one community, the Filipino-American Association of Jacksonville has an excellent trailer that comes through the parade. It shows the diversity, it shows the different people that come out, and I don't think you're going to find many more parades that are packed like we have here. Who better to bring Santa Claus through the community than Jacksonville Fire Department? It is one of the best departments in the country, and if you're going to trust Santa to be somewhere, you trust him to be on a fire engine with Chief Tomlin's team. So, they win in all the things that we do, so they might as well get to bring Santa. If someone else were to win a competition, maybe they could have that honor next year, but it probably won't happen. So, thanks to the department. And then, in the end... And in the end, we always finish up with our sanitation, our maintenance crews, and our police department bringing up the rear of the parade to say, "This is the end of the parade, but it's not the end of the service. We provide these services to the community to make sure our people stay safe and that our community stays clean." We take a lot of pride in both of those things, and it's an honor for our teams to be able to come through and say thank you to our citizens by being a part of the parade. And the last two things I have, Mayor, definitely not least, but at this time, we're on a Tuesday night. Come Friday night, football is still live and well in Jacksonville. For anyone that cares of the greatness of high school football, we definitely care, because not only do we have one team in the state championship semifinal, we have two teams in the semifinal. So Jacksonville High School has, they're still undefeated. It's beyond impressive to see an undefeated team roll through. They are competing in the 6A state championship process. They will play Friday night here in Jacksonville. So if you don't have, if you don't have a date for Friday night, Kopka's going to be there, so I just encourage you, find this guy. He's going to have a better seat than most of us, because he's going to be somewhere on the field. He's got naming rights or something down at the high school. But this team of young men are out competing for a chance to play in a state championship. 12-0, they're going to host Middle Creek on Friday. We're very proud of the Jacksonville High School Cardinals, and we're super proud of the Northside High School Monarchs. They will be taking on... They're going to travel to Wilson on Friday, so if you don't want to stay home and you want to hit the road, I encourage you to figure out how to get to Wilson. Seven o'clock kickoff. They're going to be taking on the number-one seed for the chance to play in the state championships. I am, I'm very intelligent, Mayor. I really know football like the back of my hand, and I'm pretty much predicting that we're going to have two teams in the state championship come Friday night. So if everything I said had no value, focus on the fact that Friday night football is live and well. Jacksonville High School, Northside High School, they're competing on Friday night, and that's where we want to be to support, to support our kids and support our community. Thank you, Mayor, it's all I have.
I understand why you don't know a lot about football. You did go to Carolina, right?
Who won that game on Saturday?
Roll Tide.
No, the Pack. We played Carolina.
Okay, let's do some reports. I'm going to start with you, Chief. Mike, Councilman.
Well, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to serve. I want to thank my wife, and I want to thank my family, and I also want to thank the team that, and some of them are here, that made this possible. Melinda Lee, Mayor Jones. I appreciate coming together early on and helping me through this process, and I appreciate everyone else that worked to get me into this position. You know, and I said during my retirement, I said, you know, for me, public service or service to our community changes, and it doesn't end when you retire, it evolves. And I think this is part of that evolution for me to continue to give back to the community and to make this a better place for our children. You know, I said as police chief for the last 46 years, if we invest in our children, then we won't have the problems, we won't have drug abuse problems, we won't have violence. And I see Judge Hardison there. I appreciate him coming when I was police chief to the DARE graduations and emphasizing that to the kids, you know, that investing in those kids will pay dividends in the future. And, I mean, that's been my, that's been my passion as a police officer, and it'll be my passion for city council. So again, thank everybody, everyone that voted for me, thank my family, and I'm, when I talk about my family, I talk about one place, I talk about the Y, I talk about the Rotary, and I talk about all those folks that have become part of Fay and I's family while we've been here. So again, thank you very much.
I will echo but not repeat all of the thanks. Thank you very much for everyone who made this possible. I will point out for everyone in the room and everyone who's watching that the Marine Corps Band is hosting its third annual Out in the Community Christmas Concert. It's December 12th. It is at our home church, River of Life. It is free to the public, but you do need to register to make sure you have a seat, because there are only so many seats in the house. So if you can make it to that, it's definitely worth the time. They put on a fantastic show. We rarely get to see the Marine Corps Band play at something that isn't solemn. They have fun with this, and it's a joy to watch. So I invite you personally, come join us for the concert if you can, but please do go online and register. Have a very Merry Christmas. I pray your families and your friends are blessed during this season. Enjoy it. No, we don't, no one's promised tomorrow, right? So enjoy this season, enjoy it with your family. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Dr. Washington.
Not to take away from our newly elected members, I just want to say to each of you, welcome aboard to the Jacksonville City Council and look forward to working with you.
Mr. Sosa.
I'm happy to be here. Welcome. Looking forward to working with you guys. I'm glad I did not have to get sworn in. Glad Judge Welsh didn't have to do that for the third time, so I appreciate that. So I'm happy to be here, and happy holidays.
Ms. Smith.
I want to take the opportunity to thank Judge Carol Jones for coming down and rendering my oath of office. I appreciate you and I thank you so much for answering that call, along with the Divine Knight and your representation here. Thank you so very much in your support. I also want to take the opportunity to put on the record that there are four individuals in my life that I hope to not only make proud, but pave the way for them when it comes to public service and being of service to those who are not noticeable, I will use that phrase, and that's to Donovan DeShawn Smith, Emily Ross Smith, Mr. DJ Smith, and little Miss Audrey Elise. That's my son and my daughter-in-law and my two grands. I do this for them. I want them to know that as they grow, as they get involved with the public, they get involved with their community, that they can serve in any capacity. I also want to take the opportunity to congratulate our mayor pro tem. Thank you so much. I thank God for the opportunity that you have to lead us in that respect, and many blessings to you as well. I also want to take the opportunity to remind all of us that our public service isn't about titles or positions, but it's about responsibilities. And the responsibilities that we have, we answer to God. And I can promise you, and I can say this from this seat, I can promise you that I fear Him enough to make sure that every decision that I make is solely the decision that He calls for me to make and take. So with that, I do carry this responsibility and this seat, not for granted, but I do definitely take it with honor and respect. I also want to take the final opportunity to thank God for the newly elected or newly oath council members, and as well as to those who are remaining here. I am teachable, but I'm also a retired Marine. I know some things, some things, but I am teachable, and I have absolutely no reservations from learning from all of you, respectively, as well as to our city leaders, our city manager and city attorney, as well as our deputy, as well as our assistant manager. So I thank God for all of you, and if I could give a quick shout-out to Ms. Rose.
Yes. Yes.
Just a wealth of knowledge, and I want to thank you, and I'm looking forward to learning as much as possible from you as well. Jacksonville, thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you. Really looking forward to working with this council. Consensus building again involves communicating with you all and trying to build a better Jacksonville. And I'm looking out into the audience, and it's so beautiful, this perspective, looking at you all, and you seem so excited about the prospects of what we're about to do. So keep encouraging us, and keep Jacksonville Harbor on your mind. And I know you don't know what that is, we talked, I've talked about it in the debates, but if you keep that on your mind, you'll ask fellow council persons about it, and that's a transformational concept of how we develop our waterfront. It's time for that. And Dr. Washington mentioned a riverwalk crossing, and I see former mayor George Jones, he's still here, and he probably perked up when she said that, because he and Rosie played a outcome determinative role, I think, in the fact that we were able to do that. But again, those ideas, that transformational leadership is what I try to bring and bring those kind of results. Councilmember Smith mentioned Judge Jones. I have to mention Judge Hardison. When I called, I didn't know if he'd still be doing this, because he's done this so long, and every time we call on him, he shows up. So thank you. Had an opportunity to attend the World AIDS Day event last night sponsored by Delta Sigma Theta, and it was a wonderful event, and it's been, they've been having that program worldwide for about 37 years, and so a lot of progress has been made towards medicine and saving lives in the area. So certainly appreciate the information, enlightenment that you all provided last night. So that's all I have to say, just looking forward and excited about being a part of this group.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I haven't forgotten you. Do you have anything to report?
Just welcomed to the new council members and looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed?
No.
I don't have a word.
No. I don't know. I don't want to do that.